Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? We're here to have a town hall meeting. We have some formalities that we have to address because this is a publicized meeting because we have all our members here. So give me a couple of seconds and let's go through these formalities and then let's get into the presentation of our budget and try to be aware. Let me first let you guys, well, let me, let me go through these formalities first. I'm going to read the statement by the board president. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 1046 PL 1975 C 231 S amended 206 C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending notice of the time, date, location to extend, to extended known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press New Coach in January 24th, 2025 via email. Copies of notice have also been placed on administrative bulletin boards, district schools, Asbury Park municipal budget, Asbury Park Police Department filed with the city clerk on January 24th. The mission statement by Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and characters to see in a diverse evolving global society. Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Ackerman, here. Ms. Clark, here.
Mr. Grillo, here.
Mr. LaRosa, here.
Ms. Lesinski, here.
Dr. Penops, here.
Ms. Ritz, here.
Ms. Glassman, here.
Mr. Rogers, here.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
Flashing.
Flashing, yes.
Over there.
We're going to.
All right.
All right.
My pleasure. My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to put a little context to this meeting and for the people that are here and if people want to move up because we have, most of the slides are going to be over here so visible to you so you can see them. And you know, this will be posted on the website by Monday evening with a email to send any comments or questions. Now, this is, this has been a long time coming and I'm telling people, I knew in 2018 we would be here today. And why did I know that? Because the S 2 bill that was presented to the state legislation got passed and it was a fair funding formula that had been previously passed but not regulated. And I give you a little note, I spent a lot of time in the state dealing with other issues about housing advocacy and I actually was in Trenton one day and I came into presence of our senate president who along with Sil Oliver at Plastis Legislation. And I was going into the building and I said to the senate president, he was off to the side out talking to the speaker, I said, your S 2 bill is going to affect Asbury Park. And president said to me, Tracy, let me explain to you. And I said, no need, Mr. President, I know what your intent was. But if any, anybody knows the state of New Jersey, legislation is not perfect, is not accurate, and it does not cover all the areas that it needs to. And we've had one issue that was going to determine us to be at this point was a pilot program that was enlisted in 2022, I mean 2002, 2004. That is one of the drivers of this situation, what you're going to, what you're going to see in this meeting. Now, a lot of you guys don't know me and my history has always been to be transparent and one of the things that I ran off was I wanted to make sure that people understood how we got here and what we were looking to do. And you know, you could believe anything you read on social media or anything else, I care about this district, I believe in this district, and I believe we can all come through this district together. But we all have to realize that there are significant issues that we have to address in these budgets. Now, this is the fluid budget that is going on. So some of the things you're going to see are not the exact numbers. We just got them, I think Fri- Thursday or Friday after the governor's speech, which basically did give us some reprieve, not enough, and we're going to have to as a board make decisions in the next couple of weeks to present a budget to the county, which is March, March 19th. We will be having a public meeting on all the numbers on March 13th, a special meeting. That means that we are going to lay everything out on the line and if people believe that we're going to, we're going to solve that budget at that, that conversation is still not. We have state legislation that is out with Senator Kapow and our assembly leaders that we're trying to tweak, that we're trying to help, which will offset some of those other costs if we can get that passed. And we're going to do some things that some people in the district may or may not like. And let me be clear, my only interest is to make sure that we have a thorough and efficient education for the students of Asbury. And that's what I, that's what I hope this board works on as a unified group to get it done. Now, we've done some things in the last year and a half. We've gotten rid of a couple of buildings, we've changed some things around, but right now, we have to do more. So right now, all of the questions are not going to be answered and what we're asking is that when you come up in a public comment is to give us your questions and we may not be able to efficiently, because like I said, this is a fluid budget. Let's be clear, you're not going to sit here to understand, you know, what our special education commitment is, some of the questions about comparing our, our district with charter schools because also we're going to have legislation come out and next week, which I'll be hearing about charter schools, which have never been, after the legislation was passed 20, 25 years ago, has never been provided. But if people read the paper, they see we have a charter school that we're, that is being investigated, that we provide money to, that paid its CEO almost $800,000. So these are things that you have to understand and realize that there are things that are going on, that regulations, like I said, these are legislative issues and I'm in, I'm in Trenton most of the time on a phone trying to make sure that we are recognized in some of the state legislation. So the next step is for us to, like I said, go forward. Now, our budget committee has been working tirelessly, having long extended meetings on weekends even to put this presentation together. So please, let's be respectful. If there's things that you want to know, like I said, this presentation will be posted by Monday evening with an email for any additional questions and stuff that we could probably answer in a statement on the 13th to get everything done. But let's, let's realize first, I think you have to know how we got here and also realize this, and I tell everybody, when you walk into a building, in a school building, there are legal ramifications for every student that comes into this building. So you can have these ideals that can we do this or can we do that? But legally, and I'll give you a perfect example, IEP, you can't determine what the cost on the IEP is going to be for that particular child because that child has different needs that we as this district have to provide. So you could come in and think we could have to do this or do that, but the law says we have to do this. So I'm now going to turn it over to Wendy Glassman, our finance chair, and let's start this and like I said, let's keep in mind that this is numbers that people have to understand that this is how we got here, past years, past boards, I've never addressed them, never communicated, and this is where we're at. So thank you.
I would just ask one more thing as a formality. Mr. Weiss, could you just please restate the rules on public comment right now?
So.
Switch.
So this is a public meeting, it's a public entity meeting. So as a result, under the New Jersey laws for the Open Public Meetings Act, there will be an opportunity for the public to make public comment. This board has limited public comment to three minutes in duration. So members of the public who wish to speak and provide a comment will certainly be able to do so. They will have a three minute time limit and that's, that's how it will run. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm Wendy Glassman, I'm chair of the Finance Committee. I welcome you all and I thank you for taking some time out of your weekend to hear this. I'm going to talk about what we will and won't talk about in this presentation. We have a limited amount of time and our focus is pretty singular today. I would like to thank the superintendent, the monitor, and our BA Ivy Brown for helping gathering a lot of this information and putting this presentation together. I hope that you'll feel that this time was well spent, that you end up with a better understanding of how New Jersey's structure for funding education works, what the impact is on our kids and why it's challenging and what we think we can do about it. So here you go. This is sort of the, the outline of this meeting. The goal is to educate the community on how state school funding is and for Asbury Park and how it's determined, to explain the impact of the funding on our local school budget. We are not here to talk about the specifics of the 25, 26 budget as the state just issued those numbers late Thursday afternoon. 600 schools, districts are scrambling in the next three weeks to prepare a budget and you will get all of those details on March 13th in a presentation by our business administrator and our superintendent. Next. I want to give you a little context first. The New Jersey constitution requires that every child receive a thorough and efficient education, but funding is left largely to local governments. In New Jersey, schools are funded through property taxes. Recognizing that poorer districts don't necessarily have the tax base to meet those standards, the state's required to contribute additional funding. Fast forward, as Tracy mentioned, to the S 2 legislation, the state determines what the threshold cost is for a district, for what it can fund, and then adds a bunch of additional factors and multipliers based on the characteristics of our students, grade levels, what it believes it takes to fund a basic education. When they talk about funding the basic education, that number is a plain vanilla number for children who have no additional needs. To that basic number are added multipliers to address the special needs of our students and that they're called at-risk factors. Right now, the base amount is just under $14,000 per student and you'll see why this is important as we, as we move forward. It's the state's responsibility to determine what the community share is for education. We do not determine that ourselves. Dominic will go through the funding formula and explain how that plays out and how that affects all of us in, in the end. Okay. But again, we just, what we do want you to know, we're going to keep repeating it, is that the funding formula is flawed. It does not provide for full funding for each student and that is what necessitates the property tax levy and the contribution to the school district. So we're going to describe our challenges financially and the actionable strategies to strengthen our district's financial foundation while maintaining our focus on increasing academic achievement and educating our kids in the way that we know they need. So again, this chart is really important. This is a snapshot of who our kids are. Remember when we talk about this today, we're talking about children of our community. Okay? These are not abstract numbers. This is not simply a math equation. We have an obligation to educate our kids. On the right side of this chart is the racial breakdown of our students, racial and ethnicity, and you, you see the breakdown, that that's clear. These four factors on the left side are what are really significant. They are factors that the state has identified as at-risk characteristics. That means it's more expensive to educate our students adequately. Okay? They're not the plain, plain vanilla students that you see that don't need any assistance. So multilingual learners. You see a large proportion of our students that are Hispanic and Latino. Many students come into our district not speaking English as, as their primary language. Okay? It's 20% of our student body. Free and reduced lunch recipients. This is critical and I'm, and I'm going to stop. I want you to take this in. 90% of our students get free and reduced breakfast and lunch. They come to school hungry. You all understand what the impact is of trying to learn when you're not nourished and when you're underfed. Okay? This is, this is a big challenge for, for all the students. Special education. The average statewide number for special ed students in a district is 17%. Our, our district has 24% of its students needing some sort of special educational plan and support to be able to receive a thorough and efficient education. And last is student mobility. 25% of our students are not in the district for a full school year and it's for a lot of different reasons. Okay? They move in and out, their families have to move, homelessness. It not only presents challenges in terms of providing a continuum for learning, but it also presents challenges for budgeting, for knowing class size, for preparing lesson plans. So you get a pretty good picture of how important it is to address these needs so that we can fulfill our obligation to provide an adequate and in our minds, a quality education for Okay, I'm going to give this now to Dominic to talk about the state funding formula.
Thank you. So I'm going to follow up on what Wendy mentioned, go into a few more aspects, but at the same time, just try to simplify a little bit. So if we start over at the left-hand side, we're going to do a very simple equation. The state sets the rules and there on the left, as Wendy mentioned, a vanilla student at 14,000. We're looking at number of students and then as she mentioned, different characteristics, different demographics, and the state then tells us, this is what you need to have an adequate school budget. Here's the amount. The next factor then is what's called the local fair share. Of that full adequacy amount, we're going to tell you, we state are going to tell you locality, what you should be contributing to that budget. How do they do that? They do that again with another formula, just as they used the formula on the first factor. The second formula is essentially looking at the total taxable real property of the locality and the income level of the locality's residents. Putting that in a calculation, we're not exactly sure these, these formulas are not public, how the calculation comes out, but you end up with a number that partially funds the adequacy, the base per student amount that you see up there. So we subtract local fair share from the adequacy budget and that equals, Wendy referred to this, the state aid, which is referred to as equalization aid. Okay. Locality, you can't pay all of it, so we as a state are going to kick in what's necessary to equal our number there on, on your left. Equalization aid, because the New Jersey constitution states every student throughout New Jersey should have a thorough and efficient education. So the, the thinking is with this equalization aid, whether you live in Rumson or whether you're in Patterson, that the state feels, state feels it's equalizing funding through this process. Now to go into a little more detail on this particular formula, we come back to local fair share and something some of you or many of you may, may have heard of and that's the, the impact of pilots. Certain property owners make payment in lieu of taxes, pilots, rather than paying the taxable amount. When there's a pilot, the money does not necessarily go to the school district. Therefore, in doing the calculation right above where we've discussed pilots, the state will exclude the value of a property that is in a pilot and won't count that to determine what your local fair share is because that money isn't necessarily going to the schools. However, the formula does seem to include the income level of individuals living in pilots. And so you can, you just take a moment and think this through about the details of Asbury Park, you get a sense of, of what's happening there. The, the income of the residents will be considered in, in the state saying, in effect, the state's always trying to stay, how rich are you Asbury and how much can you support your schools? We're going to do a calculation and we're going to tell you. And it is from this factor, this local fair share factor, that your state taxes are calculated. The difference then, equalization aid. Before I leave this slide and that basics, those basics, a little bit about Asbury Park's history, and you're going to see this on later slides and, and some speakers have already referred to it. Decades ago, Asbury Park was identified as what was called an Abbott district. Abbott was a litigant in litigation. I believe, Adam, you might double check me, in the eighties?
Yeah.
Yeah. As an Abbott district at that time, the state recognized in doing some, the, the formulas changed over the years, but in doing some kind of formulaic calculation, they looked at local fair share and they said, Asbury in the eighties, in the nineties was so lacking in valuable real property and income of residents, much like other urban areas throughout the state. The state said, we are going to have to, and I'm going to simplify here, we're, we're just going to subsidize the whole process. We're giving Asbury Park more money toward their schools because a clean calculation, I'll call it clean, with local fair share just doesn't work in light of the real property assets that are there and what the income is. And what happened then, over time, the state locked in that amount and Asbury continued to be subsidized. And what you're going to see on one or two slides from now is what happened when legislation and legislation that Tracy referred to as S 2, the legislature decided it is time we got rid of these subsidies and then looked at Asbury Park and said, it is also time that your real property values have significantly gone up and the income of your residents has gone up. Therefore, they began to cut over a period of five to six years, tens of millions of dollars in state aid that this board and prior boards have had to address. So the simple explanation, we were subsidized, we were subsidized for years and the legislature determined no more subsidy and you'll see the drop in terms of amounts. So what you're going to be seeing moving on is the loss of state subsidies at the same time, when you think back of, just go back for one second. When you think back of local fair share and there was a loss of state subsidies, what has real property values done? What have they done in Asbury Park over the last five to 10 years? What have incomes done in five or 10 years? And that all affects in terms of significant raises in that calculation of local fair share. So that's, that's the bulk of how we're getting a budget and how school funding works in, in New Jersey. And then my final slide, just in the, in the interest of completeness, point out, here we are over on the left on the top, that's our formula. So that's still around and then once we do our local fair share, right here, top right, the state gives its equalization. Bottom right, Abbott aid no longer exists, right? Subsidies are gone. And then just pointing out, the state does provide separately some monies for special education, transportation, this district, I believe it's typical pre-K and special ed students, and security aid. Now, we, we do get some money for that. First step is we're going to take that money, but that money does not, is not granted to us on any kind of per capita basis for the most part. It is, we, we have a, yeah, it's been flat for years, it doesn't get an increase and based somewhat in, in our view on what the state has available to fund back to schools. So it's not, it's not really formulaic, but if you're looking at amounts, I would just throw out one, I think transportation aid was a little under 500,000 this past year. So that's, that's the kind of thing you're looking at there. But that'll just give you the, the complete picture of categories of state aid. Okay? Thank you.
In the governor's address.
In the governor's address on Tuesday, and also in Senator Gopala's proposed draft legislation, special ed, which says over there, like Dominic said, is based on census data right now. If what the state wants to do happens, it'll subsequently be funded, not on census formulas, but on true student enrollment, which would actually help us. Just to...
An update as of Thursday or so. Thank you. And now Kristin Clark.
Hello. My name's Kristin. In addition to being on the Board of Education, I am also a high school math teacher. So I'm going to take you through some of the actual numbers for all of these formulas that we've been talking about. So the first graph that we're looking at here is the assessed value of all ratables for the last 10 years. And ratables are essentially just the property values that the state is using in their formula. And we can see, our ratables have grown exponentially over the last decade. In 2015, it was $1.2 billion. And in 2025, it's estimated at $3.3 billion. It has almost tripled in the last decade. And like Dominic said, the two main components of how the state puts together their local fair share estimate for every district, not just Asbury, every district in New Jersey, it is a combination of the ratables and income. And in Asbury Park, we can see our ratables have dramatically increased over the last decade. And next slide. So is our income. And this isn't a surprise for anyone. Our income has also tripled over the last decade. In 2015, the income level in Asbury Park was $220 million. And in 2024, it was projected to be $650 million. So like we said, the ratables and the income are what the state uses to put together the local fair share estimate. This is not the Board of Education determining it. It's not the city of Asbury. It is the state of New Jersey and the Department of Education and their super secret and super complex school funding formula who determine what our local fair share is. So when you have our ratables and our income increasing so dramatically over the last decade, that means that the state now believes that the city of Asbury Park and our residents here can afford to pay more for our local public schools. Next slide. And you can see that here. That purple line graph is the local fair share estimate from the state of New Jersey. The green is the actual school tax being contributed by our residents in Asbury Park. So it's not a surprise that the local fair share has been increasing over the last decade because the two main components, our ratables and our income, have tripled over the last 10 years. In 2025, the local fair share is estimated at $30 million. What you can also see though is that while the actual school tax has been increasing, we still pay and have always paid less than what the state has determined our local fair share to be. It's only within the last few years that we have even gotten close as a city and as the residents to contributing what the actual local fair share estimate has been. And in 2025, that actual school tax is $27 million. Next slide. Another big part of determining our school funding isn't just the local fair share, it's enrollment as well. And over the last 10 years, our enrollment has been steadily declining in the Asbury Park Public Schools. In 2014, it was 2,250 students. And in 2024, it was 1,340 students. That's nearly a 40% decrease over the last decade in the Asbury Park Public Schools. Part of this is the changing demographics of the city. People are moving in and they don't have kids. People who have kids are moving out. But a big part of this is also the charter schools. There are three charter schools that accept students from this city. And collectively, they receive a really big chunk of our school funding. You'll see the actual numbers in a few slides. But because of all of this, so our growing income, our growing property values, and our decreasing enrollment, the state uses all three of those to determine how much money to send to Asbury Park Public Schools. Next slide. And you can see it's not a pretty picture. From the 2014 school year to just about the 2018 school year, our state funding was essentially flat. We received the same amount of state aid year after year. And that amount was $55 million. But in 2018, the state implemented S2, which did not just impact Asbury Park, it has impacted hundreds of school districts across the state. And because of that legislation, the S2, and the change in the funding, our state aid has dropped every year since 2018, going from, like I said, $55 million to, the numbers just came out on Thursday, $17.5 million. That's a decrease of almost 70% of the state aid that we had gotten as recently as the 2017-2018 school year. And out of that $17.5 million, as a district, we are responsible for paying for the students that attend the three charter schools in this district. And that payment is estimated at $12 million. So once we make our payment to the three charter schools, out of that $17.5 million, we're left with only $5.5 million from the state funding to educate 1,300 students. That comes out to only a few thousand dollars per student in state aid. So without our local fair share and our local school tax, that's not enough to educate a student and provide a thorough and efficient education. And I'm now going to turn it over to Joe to talk about the specifics.
Actually Wendy's doing it.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to turn it over to Wendy.
Okay. Remember that $55 million in state funding number that Kristin just told you a second ago? Our current budget is $57 million. It's $2 million higher than what the state gave us 10 years ago. So now I'm going to take you through this budget. Okay? The biggest number through this budget is salaries and benefits. Okay? The very biggest number is salaries, and that's what it should be because that's what makes a school. The majority of it is your teachers, then it's your custodial staff, your groundskeepers, your security. But fundamentally, it's your teachers, your paraprofessionals, the people that educate your children. Okay? Of this amount, of this, $23 million represents this item. Okay? When we look at this to this, that's 67% of the budget includes the benefits. But you see, the benefits are a pretty small amount. A lot of that is something that we can't control. We're in a state insurance fund. We deal with the premiums that are dictated to us. But I want to dispel a notion that a large chunk of our salary budget goes to pay high-level administrative staff because that is not the case. We have four administrators in central office right now. That accounts for 0.03% of the budget. If you add to that amount all of central office, which includes grant writers, support staff for the superintendent, the curriculum director, it's 0.07% of the entire budget. Okay? It's about $1,007, of $23 million represents central office salaries. Okay? What is the second largest expenditure we have? Charter schools. 21% of our budget goes to satisfy our obligation to the charter schools. The charter schools are not subject to the same constraints we are. When our funding drops, they do not have to impose economies. They do not have to reduce staff. You've all read the newspaper. You know what's going on in at least one, the largest charter school in Asbury Park. This is a huge problem for us. So we're talking about this $12 million that we spend to fund the charter schools that coincidentally is the budget gap that we have for next year. $12 million. But that is all funded out. We have not been even able to, as you know, confirm that all of the students in the charter schools for whom we pay are in fact Asbury Park residents. And it seems if you aggregate all of the number of students in the charter schools, it exceeds, with our students, it exceeds the census values. But again, benefits you see are only 15% of the budget. Outer district transportation, again largely special ed and some pre-K. Utilities are small. And then this 9% of other represents things like facilities, furniture, training, additional Chromebooks and computers that we buy. And again, just put it in perspective. 10 years ago, the state was funding us almost this entire portion. And we're still making do with a budget that's similar to what was being spent then in spite of increasing costs. And understand again with this budget that, as we've mentioned, special ed aid, security aid, transportation aid is only a fraction what the state provides. The remainder has to be provided by the school district to meet its obligation to educate our kids. Okay, next slide. Let's talk about the charter school funding. It's a particular thorn in my side. Just understatement. Look at the numbers. 2015, we funded $5 million to charter schools. That's blown up to $12 million this past year. We have been advocating with the Department of Education, with our county superintendent. We have identified key issues that need reform, both in terms of legislation and in terms of state regulation. And we've been working with our legislators to advance changes to the charter school laws. Key items are lack of residency verification. About 600 charter school students now. We have not been able to verify about 260 of those students because the Department of Education has decided that we are not entitled to receive that information, even though the primary responsibility for determining eligibility to be an Asbury Park student rests with this school district. We have been desperately trying to exercise our authority and responsibility to confirm the residency in a standard manner across all students. Two out of three charter schools comply. One does not. But that's almost 300 students that we cannot confirm are Asbury Park residents. And that is again, at almost $14,000 per student. Special needs costs. A lot of the, some of the charter schools have marketed themselves as being able to provide special needs education to the students, which is not accurate. They don't have the staff and the resources to do so. And rather than sending those students back to us, where we have the capacity, the skills and the resources to provide those services at a reasonable cost, they tend to send their kids out to specialized schools that sometimes costs three times as much as what it costs us to educate special ed students. And the last item, again, is a, you know, quirk in the legislation for how you count the student body each year. But students are calculated on October 15th. It's bodies and seats. If a student leaves after October 15th and comes back to the school district, the money does not follow. So we're still paying out even though we've taken those students back in, but we do not get the money back into the district. So a charter school theoretically and practically receives that additional funding that never gets accounted for. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is the charter schools also tout themselves as providing a superior education to the Asbury Park School District. And the published test scores are virtually no different than Asbury Park's. So what's our approach for tackling this problem? Again, we are in litigation. We, an administrative law judge has issued a decision with respect to funding an income verif, oh sorry, residency verification for college achieve because Asbury Park has been disputing that. That decision at this time rests with the Commissioner of Education, who has to either affirm or reject that opinion. We're waiting for that. In the meantime, we have recommended three things. We've worked with Senator Gopala to have these incorporated into proposed changes to the charter school laws. Enhanced district control, tighter regulation by the Department of Education, at least on a par with how our schools are regulated. Residency verification enforcement. Let us do our job. Local control over special education services and the associated costs. If a charter school can provide the special ed education, let them do it. If they can't, you come back to the home district and we decide whether we can provide the appropriate education for the kids or whether we should send them to another district. But it should be removed from the charter schools at the point that they acknowledge that they can't provide that education. Again, enhanced state audit requirements for charters. There is virtually no regular oversight of the charter schools. Second, equitable cost distribution. The charter schools ought to share in the burden of funding and lowered funding year over year. They should be forced to cut staff and programming similar to what we're required to do. But at this point, the burden all rests with the Asbury Park School District. And we have seen significant loss in the programming that we ought to be providing to our kids. And the last year again is legislative reform. Advocating for legislation that improves charter school regulation and oversight and limits the amount of charter schools that can get licensed in a district. There is no reason in the world that three charter schools should have been approved in a school district that is one square mile. Okay, Joe Grumman.
Hi folks. You having fun yet? So we've seen kind of where we're at. And the big question now is, what are certain actions that we could do to reduce the funding gap? And there are ways to do it. And again, this is, these are all suggestions, things that the Finance Committee as a whole has spoken about, that the superintendent has also spoken about and the state monitor has spoken about in kind of general terms at various school board meetings. But these are some recommendations and certain things that we feel can help with But these are some recommendations and certain things that we feel can help with the issues that we've, we have regarding school funding and the funding gap. First off is, we recognize that we need to right-size the district. Our footprint is too large, and that's why you've heard on multiple school board meetings for the past few months about identifying certain buildings, certain properties, and some of them we've already voted to pursue sale on them, like the maintenance building, and also try to reconfigure the other ones, right? And in doing so, we're, our hope is to right-size the district, right? To make it be in proportion to the amount of students that are, that are here without taking away essential services. So that's one. The other is outsourcing operations, and it's, it's kept generalized because there's a lot of discussion of what that is going to look like, but essentially, you know, doing a study to see the cost benefit, basically a cost benefit analysis, to see if certain operations within the school district, if outsourced, can save us money. The other is singularly important because everybody knows that this is a proven method, and that's shared services. Shared services with other school districts, shared services with the city. I know that Mayor John Moore is here, we've spoken with him about potentially doing a shared service agreement when it comes to hiring a grant writing service. So there's also other kind of shared services that we could use in terms of storage, and if we sell the maintenance building, kind of making sure that we can share the costs as much as possible. But it's not even those kind of costs, it's even the things that are like the most unsexy stuff, like snow removal, you know? If we can, if we can do shared service agreements with other school districts or the city with that, you actually save a lot of money. And then unfortunately, it also means continued program and staff reductions. The superintendent has made that clear, that that's something that we're going to have to deal with in this budget, this upcoming budget. In terms of potential revenue sources, because this is also a revenue problem, I'm a homeowner, I feel it every, you know, every quarter, the fact that, you know, these, the revenue that needs to be generated is shouldered by, by the homeowners, some homeowners in Asbury Park. So because of that, there are, there is revenue generating programming, such as the 45-Day Academy, and also the Emotional Regulation Impairment Program that can actually, we would bring in students from other school districts, and they would actually pay us to, to do basically special classes for them. So instead of outsourcing that out to a quote-unquote "special" school somewhere out in Marlboro or wherever, at a premium, and when I mean a premium, we're talking about $100, $115, $120,000 per student, this will bring it in-house. So it would save us on costs, but also we could bring in other students from other districts and charge those districts for, for educating those students. The other is, and you know, folks have been speaking about this, is regionalization, right? And, but here's the thing, the way regionalization we've been discussing, at least in the Finance Committee, has been about returning Asbury Park to being a receiving district, and finding state money to find, to actually commission a regionalization study. There have been talks, I think Tracy, you spoke with Senator Gopal, that there still is money out there, so we can actually do a regionalization study to see if there is any cost benefit to, you know, to pursuing that. It's one thing to just put it in the Tri-City News, it's another thing when you actually get someone to do a study. We don't want to do it at the cost of the district, so we're looking for funding from the state to do that. Other school districts have done that. In talking about new revenue, this is something that, again, both Dominic and I have been discussing this multiple times when he was on the board. The first time, we're revisiting it now, we're discussing it with, with the city, and that is, instead of the homeowners shouldering the burden of, of funding our schools, why not make sure that the folks that come to our city for concerts, for performances, for all kinds of entertainment, that a small fee or a tax on each concert ticket could be earmarked for the school district. I'll go even further, my personal opinion, it could be great to fund a school arts program, or Asbury Park, we should have like a world-class arts curriculum throughout the high school. And I'm not saying that playing favorites because of my daughter, she goes to this high school and she's a fantastic artist, but go for it. So an entertainment tax is something that we really should look at and pursue and discuss with, with the city council. By the way, it's great to see four of the five council people here, thank you for being, being here and attending this. And then finally, and again, this is very high level, 30, 30,000-foot view, but requiring new pilots to include a carve-out payment specifically for the Asbury Park School District. It just makes sense. The city pays whatever we tell them has to get paid, right? But it's not specifically allocated for the school district. So it's something that needs to be discussed, and we hope that the Finance Committee continues those, these conversations. Next slide. Okay, so, there you go. So, closing the district, so whether it was last year or 10 years ago, like the one thing that a lot of folks sometimes say is, let's just close the district and send the kids elsewhere. Sometimes they don't even say send the kids, they just say send them elsewhere, like they're boxed wine or something, right? And they're not. So a couple of things about this though, you close it, the district closure is not something that happens lightly, it almost never happens. First of all, there's no legal mandate, closure is not required, but there's also no legal requirement for any other school district, neighboring or otherwise, to accept our students whatsoever. So I see Mayor John Appletani here from Ocean Township, like if we wanted to, to close a district and send all our kids over to Ocean Township High School, it's not something that the Ocean Township parents would want, simple as that. In terms of ongoing responsibilities, we still would have to pay for administrative staff, board, pension liabilities, all those things remain. The potential savings are also greatly overestimated. And then finally, in terms of community impact, we always talk about how this is a, this town is like a tale of two cities, and you know, we always try to quote, like bring people together. How does that look when all of a sudden the mostly brown and black kids that are taught in Asbury Park High School now have to get shipped off to another district? Students and families will struggle. You don't know if, if our kids are going to be able, you know, at first blush, to compete at Ocean Township High School or Neptune High School. And public education is a cornerstone of, of our community. So I don't know if anybody here agrees with, with closing the districts, I'll venture to guess, money in my pockets, that nobody on this board thinks that we need to close the district. Next slide. Okay, so, plan of action. We all now know the stakes, we know about state funding, I'm sure there's plenty of other questions out there, what can we do? And it's, our path requires a coordinated action across a few key areas. One is to actually, to advocate for our schools. It can't just be Tracy Rogers going to Trenton every day, you know, racking up mileage. It's about making sure that we contact our legislators, we let them know that we're watching, that we're listening, and if there's a proposed legislation, that we want a, you know, a summary of what that long legislation looks like, and make sure that we, we give our two cents, sometimes three cents. Also, if you have any questions, get facts from the source. Email our superintendent, our acting superintendent, email our board president, and they will, you know, they'll try to answer as many questions as possible. I can't, I mean, I don't have to tell you how toxic social media is these days, whether it's Nextdoor, whether it's Facebook, you know, look, everyone has their biases. So the best thing to do if you want the actual data and facts, this gentleman asked me today about a specific thing, email the acting superintendent, no question is, you know, stupid. And then also participate. I can't stress enough how important it is to attend our board meetings, let your voices be heard. Attend community forums, and make sure that if you have, you know, again, if you have a question, or if you have something, some sort of suggestion, let it be known, let it be public. And to that, there's, like we said, there's a special budget meeting March 13th at 6:00 PM at Bradley School, bring your popcorn, get comfortable, and, and please come to that. We encourage individuals and organizations to bring in programming, both for the arts and other unfunded activities to our schools. We have so much talent in, in Asbury Park, both in organizations and professional individuals who finally, they're starting to collaborate together with our school district to bring things like, like the arts and podcasts and communications curriculums, and seeing those organizations like the Asbury Park Arts Council, working with the school district, with the principals themselves, is something that I think we need, we should celebrate and encourage more of. And so these are actions that represent vital components to our collective response to the current funding challenges. Look, it's not perfect, it's not gonna, you know, right sizing the district and selling off school buildings is barely gonna make a dent in your taxes, but it's the right thing to do because it's best practices. So by working together across these areas, we believe that we can build a stronger foundations for our, our school district's future. That's it, we're moving back to lunch.
So again, thank you, I really hope that this has given you some clearer picture of how all these pieces come together, and what our struggles are, and what our costs are, and that you understand that, and I'm sure you, you do know that this is about children, we're the Finance Committee, but we're not really counting beans, we're figuring out how to educate children. And it's, you know, kind of the driving force is, we believe that public education is really important in Asbury Park, and it says something about our community, and we're trying to do it in a way that is effective, and that we can be proud of. We will take your comments in accordance with the rules of Board of Education meeting. We will not be able to answer those questions today, but we will answer them again. We will either give us an email address, or we will otherwise answer them publicly next week, but we do hope that this has been a little bit illuminating for all of you. And please understand that this board is really committed to providing a great education for the kids in Asbury Park, so that they come back or stay in this community as important, contributing members of the community. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody, we're not going to have a lot of hand clapping, this is a lot of heavy news that people have not known. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not introducing the mayor, who we're very much in contact with, our councilwomen, Yvonne, Eileen, and, oh, okay. But one of the things I want to press to you, there's a lot of things, like I said, in these budgets that you don't know, and one of the things that personally sticks in my craw, and I don't know if the other board members, all the board members know, you have a town deal, which is right next door, that is one of the richest, I think in 2013 declared one of the richest townships in, in the state, and not only do they get an adequacy, I mean adequacy, their funding amount, but there was a loophole which allows them to become a choice school district, which allows our kids to be gone over there and this, and to increase their enrollment, the state is paying for. So almost 2.5 million, which if you talk about things that people talk realistically about regionalization or everything else, that they should be coming here, and we should be getting that money. But we have very odd opinions or priorities in each of these districts that consolidately, and then I'm going to openly say it, just seems to be very biased towards us collectively as a state and as a community educating our kids. So, you know, I don't mind being on a four or two-hour call with our state legislatures, I don't mind going to a four, four-hour hearing and lobbying in Trenton, I mean, I have a lot of experience with it, so I keep doing it, and I will continue to do it because I believe that there are residents here who can afford these increases, and who I don't want to see pushed out. So I am very, very hard at fighting to make sure we get as much of the funding that we are prioritized, that we should be prioritized on, not Deal who's getting 2.5 million dollars of state-funded money that should be coming to us. So, you know, these are the things that we have to look at, these are things that sometimes you guys don't know about. So like I said, I don't mind going and fighting for, for, for Asbury Park, and I want, if anybody wants to jump in the car with me, stay a five hours at a hearing, not one of the prettiest, but it's, this is what happens. So we're going to open this up to public comment, and like I said, please, this presentation will be by Monday, put it up with an email to send in comments, and we will go through and try to answer as many questions as possible. This is a fluid budget, as you just heard, there's a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and you know, as much as people thought we'd get paid, we don't get paid. You know, I, I, I sleep and eat this stuff every day.
One thing that I, that I forgot to mention, but is super important in terms of, you know, making sure that the costs go down, is enrolling your child in the Asbury Park Public School System. I don't know how many of you have kids that are in the audience, or how many send your kids to the, to the Asbury Park Public School System, but I'm telling you, my daughter went to Deal School for K through eight, by the end of it, it was not a really good experience for her, she's now enrolled in the high school, but whether it's the elementary school, pre-K, middle school, or high school, I'm telling you, just as someone with personal experience, seeing these amazing kids, seeing how they have a joy for learning, and seeing how the teachers, some of them are here, practically raise a lot of these kids, it is a district that you can send your child to. I don't care what Zillow says, because you know, one out of 10 and all this other stuff, I've seen it on the ground personally, there's always, you know, stuff that we could do better, but the way to really, one way to really get kids, to get our costs down, is to encourage folks to enroll their kids in our public schools, that's all.
Also, some of the board members may stick around, we have some individual knowledge of certain things and questions, I will stick around as long as possible to answer questions. Like I said, I live and breathe this stuff, which is not good, but it's better than smoking. And in accordance with the Board Policy 0167, Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session. All public comments should be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer by his or her name, municipality of residence, group affiliation, evocable. All public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. And like I said, I know this is a lot. Like I said, you know, if you're in these meetings and you know about the state regulations on everything that goes on, what we can and cannot do, what facilitates a thorough and efficient education. And I tell everybody this, my personal opinion. I don't think any child's education should be determined by a zip code. We are all a community, we're all a state, and every child that lives in any community should expect the same efficient education. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nina Semlin. I reside in Asbury Park. I'd like to say to Acting Superintendent Jabino and our board, it's about time that we all sit at the table and start trying to figure out how to work together and be more productive when it comes to our children. Now, two concerns that I had based watching this presentation. And one of them was the fact that 90% of our children get free or reduced lunch. The problem that I have with that is 80% of our kids are throwing their breakfast lunch in the trash every day. So we need to really reconsider that that money is going out the back door every day. It's going right in the dumpster. Now, I do know that there was an opportunity for Sedaco to sit down with Karen from Innert Faith in regards to food justice. And then there's a lot of learyness in regards to her wanting to come to the table in regards to coming up with a better solution for our children, which I don't know if the board knows this, but because she did not partner with Innert Faith or with Karen for the food justice, you guys lost a good about $20 million of funding that could have came into this district to feed our children. So that would have been a less burden for the board to take on if we had did what we were supposed to. The other question is, I think you might want to re-elaborate a little bit more when you're asking, what can this community do to help this board? Be a little bit more specific in regards to what you're asking and start putting it out to the community. What can we do as district? Because as I look at everybody sitting out here, we all can contribute something to helping this school district, help our children. And mind you, my kids are grown and out of district and I'm still fighting for these kids. 35 years I've been doing this. But what can we do as a community to help our district better help our children? The other question I have is basically like you guys are saying, at the end of the day, all this money that, you know, we're putting out to charter schools and this, that or whatever, but I really want you guys to start considering one question. What are they offering and giving our children that we're not? Because that might be able to bring our children back in our district. Because you have to remember, we had a lot of programming and extracurricular activity in this district when I was here in the high school and I graduated in 85. We no longer have those opportunities for our children now. So those are some of the things that we might need to reconsider. How do we get these programs back in the district to keep our children in Asbury Park? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Semlin.
Hi, thank you all so much for the presentation today. It was very illuminating. My name is Jennifer Ana Frio. I'm a resident here, also a public sector professional and interested in public finance. But I just, what I wanted to ask for further clarification for your next meeting, which I'll plan to attend on March 13th. My neighbor already has it in her phone, we're going to come. It was really interesting to see the trends over time for 10 years, but when I looked at the charts, the last three years in particular are the ones that I'm interested in and I couldn't figure out. So it looked like actually the state aid has been kind of stable over the last three years, so $20 million, $18 million and then $17 million. That's not a huge change. And then the charter school contributions, which you all are pointing to pretty heavily, are also stable. It was 11 million or so, went down two years ago and then it's back up around 12 million. That doesn't equal $13 million of the deficit, the shortfall that you said we have this year. And so I don't know if it's where you are in the budget process and that's subject to change, but I didn't get a text from my neighbor last year about a $13 million shortfall. And so I hope that's going to be resolved within the coming weeks, but I would love more clarity on that in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Rich Gore, Sixth Avenue, Asbury Park. I love where I live on my street because I'm only three houses from the backstop of the field. And it's so wonderful to sit there for 40 years on my front porch and be able to see the lights on at night and the games playing. And especially in the fall when I'm out there raking my leaves and I hear the football announcer and the score and you can hear the crowd cheering when they're... It is just a wonderful sense of community that I love. What I don't love is that living here for 40 years, our children have been last, just last in the lists of the state of New Jersey. I have a 40-year career in education. It breaks my heart that our students are last. Since the time John and I have been living here, I've seen three generations of Asbury Park students from first grade through 12th grade go through our system and nothing has changed. Even when the state was our cash cow and gave us $52 million every year, and we're still last. And I think the problem with our board's history is that there was no vision. The board has, the people on the board don't have a vision of where to go in the future. And unfortunately, kicking the can down the road, unfortunately now falls on your shoulders. It's a, I would hate to be in your position. One of the things I want to publicly say is that I do disagree on the next to the last film. When it came time to regionalization, if you listened carefully, they said they will only consider regionalization if it's brought into the school district and then they want the state to pay for it. But on the slide before, it said that if there was regionalization, it would just be more costly than we think with most statistics. So I would like to see you amend that to just say, maybe not close the whole district, but it has, the statistics have to be there for the residents to see. We need to see every option on the table. And I'll just leave you with this. You are at a precipice.
Thank you.
For short person. Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. Former board member, a whole bunch of stuff, right? President and executive director of WCC Historic Innovation Association, formerly known as the West Side Community Center. Part of what was said I was going to talk about, about programming and having something in the district to care about, was said already. There's a reason why the other people go to charter schools. Like when COVID happened, College Achieve dropped off laptops and hotspots for their students and we didn't offer the same. I sit here in this auditorium, which I'm a graduate of Asbury Park, 1998, and it looks the same, a little bit fresh paint. And then I know the chairs are new because the former principal put them in itself because they were sitting in the basement and him and the janitor put it in themselves, right? A few years back, right? I see that the school looks the exact same as when I left, you know, 20 years ago. And we have to do something about it. Why would you want to send your child here? It was dark when I was here 20 years ago, it's still dark. We don't have the right programming. When we sit up there, we have, you said, a lot of people are now coming. There've always been people coming, offering different, something different. The carpenters union, the electricians union, all of these different things and shops that have closed down that used to be here are now gone, right? We need something creative. We need to spend money on things that are actually beneficial to the district. Like we don't, we spent over $200,000 in paying a state monitor that sat here for close to 20 years and have absolutely did anything, nothing. We talk about the charter school funding. Well, here's the thing, they were asked to come. The county asked them, people in the county asked the charter school to come and gave them approval from kindergarten to 12th grade right off the bat. Right? That seems, you know, catch that. And then also, before a child gets approved to go to a charter school, it literally has to come to the district and get certified that they are from this district. They have to go to the board office, prove they live here. They give them a plaque and they send them on their way. That verification is ours, right? And each year we're supposed to do it, right? So when we talk about extra going out the board, what we're doing is actually wasting money through lawyers and financing and not doing what we need for our kids. It's just verifying them each year. Set a policy in your district to verify them each year. We can't create it. And I'm glad that you're taking advice about being a sending district. We had a charter school, we had an alternative school here that was shut down that actually had other districts sending children here, right? Because, you know, other schools are very expensive, right? But having somewhere and a program created for local. Okay, that was very rude, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Teretha Jones, or it's actually morning. Former business, family business owner and employee of the city of Asbury Park. A former contact of mine says, if it's not about you, without you, it's not for you. This is a town hall meeting. The folks in here are not representative of the students and families in the city of Asbury Park. This gentrification and segregation is real. This city is more segregated than my birthplace of Jackson, Mississippi. And it's totally crazy and therein lies one of the major problems. I want to make one point, that term plain vanilla phrase? Stop using that. It's segregationist, it's a racist statement and comment. Please stop using it. The connotation is not pretty. And I also want you to continue the fight with the charter schools because the ratio and mathematical formulas are flawed. And when we talk about Asbury Park, everybody talks about, oh, those test scores. Well, we also have to recognize, and many in here may not know, and Ms. Math teacher, you probably get it. We have small numbers, populations are small. When you're doing that, you're doing rates calculations and rates are flawed. They appear worse than they are. 10% of 100 or 50 for Asbury Park is a whole lot. But if it was 100,000, that ratio and rate would be different. So we have to understand that we have to fight and publicize and write about the racism and bias when they talk about the city of Asbury Park and the students. Because one day, everybody goes and talks to the state report cards, which even the Department of Education recognized were flawed and tried to sneak and correct undercover. So pay attention. People assume because it's black and brown is flawed. No, talk about the number of students per ratio that graduate with associate's degrees before they get their high school diplomas here. And also recognize that just because it's Deal don't mean it's right because more crime and madness is going on in Asbury, over in Deal than in Asbury Park. And also, let's correct the bias and racism because that will 500% impact the outcomes that we have with you all trying to do your work. Most of the crime done in Asbury Park and Neptune is not done by Asbury Park and Neptune residents. But because we have this painted picture of black, brown, being nasty, ugly, criminal, that's what people think. And because I'm standing here as an informed professional and I see all of you here that don't look like, like I said, the people that are in the classrooms, that tells me we have a problem. We have to begin to call it out and call it what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Gladon. I'm a local journalist, writer and community advocate. And I do have some comments to make and I will be writing an article about this. But I'm going to, as I always over the past 10 to 25 years, remain diplomatic and fair. But I'm going to step outside of that for a moment in this room. And if you want to call me to task or talk to whatever newspaper I'm writing for at the moment, please feel free to do so. I know almost everyone on that board. I know your hearts, I know your compassion, I know your intelligence and I know your work. I know what you do in your day job and I know how busy you are in your life. And I commend you for the heart and the soul and the things that you do on behalf of our children. With that said, I've also fought with each and every one of you, rightly or wrongly, in public and in private. And I'm going to ask you, as my beautiful colleague and friend before me said, please stop talking about our children a certain kind of way and check your unconscious bias. Because even though I know your hearts and I love you with affinity, I can be fair. And I heard the verbiage, and I'm not going to call you out individually on what you said, but you said enough damage that hurt my heart once again. Our children are smart and intelligent and given the opportunity, they will rise to the challenge. Because when I came into this district, I came in with a negative attitude and the stigma that I was felt fed over the years about Asbury Park. See, I grew up in Point Pleasant Beach, a rich white community. And everything that our staff in Asbury Park is trying to do for our kids, those white teachers did for me. They crossed the lines, they waited at the door to give me a hug, they made sure I was okay. My running coach, after I got off the line, I would run up to him and hug him and climb on him. He would be brought up on charges if somebody saw that today. So what I'm saying to you is before you start sending our staff that our kids trust because they're going through something and half of them are working, I work in the restaurants with our kids that go to our high school, that are in the Dream Academy. I work side by side with these kids and I have a bad back. And when my back gives out or I fall on the floor, these kids come and pick me up. These kids are worth saving. And all of you new people that moved to this town, you better invest in the intelligence that's coming down the pipe because we as a community are not going to let these kids fail.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, I'm Natalie Syracuse. I live under WIT. I am a teacher actually in Asbury Park and Little School. I have kids that go to the Deal School. So I have a couple of things that I want to talk about. First, as a teacher, I want to say that our schools are sad. Like I have nothing. I'm a science teacher in the middle school. We have so little materials, so little things. Our classrooms look like they are 30 years old. You know, like our technology is non-existent. We have Chromebooks, but the kids can't take them home. It's a whole big mess. And we're doing the best we can do. Mr. Mark Gore is doing an amazing job trying to make everything work and flow, but it is, it is, it's impossible. Like it is definitely a very difficult job to try and do what I see my own children have at their school. So we are absolutely in a deficit with technology, with programming, with curriculum, with everything. I teach STEAM, there is literally no STEAM curriculum written, so I can just do whatever I want, which is fine. But, you know, it'd be nice to have some sort of curriculum. So, you know, like it is, you know, I'm doing the best I can do and I think my kids are enjoying it and I know that the kids are learning. But, you know, just the fact that there is no curriculum, I don't have any access to materials. Everything that I do, I bring in myself, I pay for myself because it is just impossible to get, I mean, maybe it's not possible, but it's a lot easier for me to go spend $30 than it is for me to try and find those materials. I have scrounge in the high school in the closet, in the science room closet. I have scrounge in the high school in the closet, in the science room closet. I've gone through boxes. I've snuck into supply rooms to search for things that I need to teach. And, you know, to say that I should be sending my kids here. My kids both have IEPs, and I know from being in a school that they are definitely getting more from where they are than we can provide them in this district. And I would love for us to be able to provide all the students that need the special education programming to have it, and they don't. They just don't. There is not enough special education teachers. There's not enough, there's kids that are in the regular classroom that should be pulled out, but they can't be because there aren't teachers. There isn't funding for it. And I just don't understand. I guess my, my big question is how does everyone else do it? How do other districts do it? Because we can't be the only district in the state that has a lack of funding or a so-called lack of funding. So like, my question is just, how do other districts have the ability to make do with the money that they have? How do other districts have smart boards and technology and materials and, you know, budgets? Like, I, that, that's my question is like, how, how does everyone else manage to do it? And we can't. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I wasn't planning on talking at all. I'm Jessica Daniels. I'm a teacher here, English teacher at the high school. Jessica Daniels. Okay. I live on Ridge Avenue. Sorry, I'm like shaking. Because I just want to say that it is possible. And I just want to give one specific example that this week we got back our test scores for the fall block of the NJSLA, which is the state test. And I don't even know if Mrs. Stroud would know the statistics, the actual data better. But an enormous percentage of my students who took it were advanced proficient, which is exceeding expectations in the state of New Jersey. The large, I think it was only a small percent that didn't pass, and it was a, a boy with an IEP who failed by two points. So I just want to say that it is absolutely possible. And do we have struggles? Are there things that get in our way? Are there daily things that are exhausting that may not happen other places? Sure. But we can absolutely do what we're doing. And I think that, I know that I've been here a long time, and I don't ever remember really having anything like this on a Saturday to kind of like inform us. If we did, I, I just don't know. I'm not coming for anybody. But I just want to say that it is absolutely possible. Our kids are amazing. We also, I don't, I don't want to keep going. But anyway, there's a lot of things sometimes that are said that just aren't true. And like, as a teacher in the actual building who attends every sporting event, everything, all those things, people stand up and just make things up that just aren't true. And so I just, I just want to say that. Like, we have Chromebooks in every single classroom. We did just get them because of a funding issue, but not just get them, but we have them. We, all these sorts of things that come up sometimes, I'm like, and that's the only reason I'm standing up because I just didn't like the word impossible. And so that's it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sheila Brazil. I'm a former graduate from Asbury Park. From Asbury Park High School, nineteen eighty-two, via Alabama. I came here my junior year. I'm a former board member, also with Mrs. Simmons. She was a former board member. And when I was on board, well, I always advocated for the kids changing classes. Because when I was in Alabama, from the second grade to the high school, you had a different teacher for every subject. Because not all teachers could teach all subjects. You had a different math teacher, a different science teacher, a different... And so that's what I always said. And I just come to the board meetings even before I had my children. I was like, well, we need to switch class, have the kids switch classes. When they say it's an inconvenience for the kids. I say, well, don't move the student, move the teacher. Let the teacher go from class to class and teach different subjects. But we have some amazing kids in this district. Our children are amazing. I have three amazing children that, one graduated in two thousand and ten. My middle son, which is my oldest son, Anthony, my middle son, he was late for school every day. He did not, could not get his credit. He was passing on his class. So I signed, signed him out when he turned seventeen, took his GED test, got eight hundred on language arts, almost seven hundred on everything else. So he was, his attention was not being held. So he's still, and then my, my daughter graduated twenty twenty-two. Well, long story short, we have, like I say, amazing kids. If you show them that you care about them and that you love them and respect them because a lot of adults, us as adults, think we should give respect from the kid, but we don't want to give the kid respect. It works, works both ways. And lastly, I come out to the board meetings. I say what I say. I do not sugarcoat. If I step on your toes, that's well and good, but I still love you. But I have to let you know and have to call you out, right is right, wrong is wrong. And for some of us, the former board people to get up here and say things that they know, when the superintendent, after Dr. Low, Mr. Repalet came in and that you were to part of voting for this person to come into the district, now you want to come up here. I'm sorry that you'll be calling you out, but you want to come in here and act like it didn't happen? That you want to part of that? That is very, 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 very BSs, okay? I, as you know, I love you, but I call like I see it. So don't come up here saying, and we had, you know, we had programs that when you was a part of the board. Okay, that you voted against. My time is up, and I, I'll see y'all the next time on March thirteenth. Have a nice day.
Good morning. Elizabeth Smith, statewide education organizing committee. I'm here, I'm not a resident of Asbury Park, but I do organizing here in Asbury Park. I'm very interested in providing training, anything that's needed for the district. I know that there are other organizations and community members who are ready, willing, able to do that. But there has to be a way that that is welcomed, okay? One other proposal that I would put on the board is a community school. That maybe the finance committee could add that as an option. Because then you would have the community being a part of the school, which is what you're asking. I, at least that's about, some of what I heard, okay? So I recommend that that proposal be looked at.
Thank you.
Hi, Jose Alcaraz, Asbury Park resident. I'm a Latino, and there are no Latinos here probably, or very little. So the question to the board is how are, how is the board communicating to the Latino population that it's sixty percent of our students? Are we really, it's not through the, not through the teachers, but the board, the decisions that are taken by the board? And I assume that the sixty percent Latino population is also on the charter schools. So how are the charter schools convincing the Latino population in Spanish that they are a better option? It's not what they are offering. The question is, how are they convincing them? What is their marketing? And what are, what can we do here to achieve that same result?
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments, and I'm going to glance over a couple of them. They're going to be full details, but please send them in. Ms. Lozinski reminded me on some of the funding issues that probably were not cross-referenced in the last couple of years. And I think some of the funding, we went through COVID. So anybody knows, we were also substantially subsidized, which those, those costs were not reoccurring. They were just during COVID, and there were large amounts of money that allowed us, one, to make sure our buildings were better taken care of, which we have a long history of our buildings not being substantially taken care of. I also like to thank our teacher who, and I want to admit that at this last meeting, the numbers we talked about, to have our ELL students show ELL right now, have them increase to proficiency. And let me repeat that, proficiency for years where we lacked. Our other schools' numbers are starting to go up. We have realigned our education. We have realigned and focused on education in this last year. This is our major focus. Some of the questions we've had to cut, a lot of these programs, because we're fighting over this budget. And like I said, I'm the worst warrior because I'm going to fight anybody to make sure our kids get what they're supposed to get. And like I said, these four-hour meetings in Trenton, I don't mind. I don't mind halting down and stalking legislators, stalking whoever, and also correcting issues of other districts getting money that we should have. The issue on the charter schools, yes, they initially come to us. But over years, they have to be recertified. Kids do move, and we have to account that we're paying for those students. And let me let you know, I was shocked when I got on the board two years ago and I saw we were paying astronomical special needs payments for students. And that's what we have to do of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per child. If you ever come to our board and I looked at those numbers like, wow, like, we're really paying a hundred and twenty thousand for that child. But that's our, that's our moral responsibility. That's our obligation, and we have to realize that. Now, like I said, I think we all have to come together. And this is the, this is the meeting. And I want to thank these, this group of people that spent their Saturdays, three or four hours, putting together this presentation. And the work that they're putting in to do this. And continually, we have to now, as a full board, now go through everything and look at numbers, look at things, stuff that years ago has not been, you know, in, in, in two thousand and eighteen, when I ran into, I was not on the board when I, when I spoke to that senate president who lost to the trucker. But he did tell me he was going to work on pilots. And I'm still going to push the legislation to work on pilots. We're also going to go after monies that most people don't think we can get that we should be getting. So I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want everybody to know I know your passion. I know the passion of this community. I know the vision of this community. I want to live up to it, and I want to be there to make sure we get there. So anybody wants to talk to me, I'll stick around, ask questions about, you know, those four-hour meetings or what, some information available. And I hope some of the other board members will also. But I think it's time that we close up and we adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a close, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, sorry. Merci to adjourn.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you.